Good morning. It's 9:30 a.m., Tuesday, November 8th, Election Day. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech you to find guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right. And we do have minutes from November 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Public comment regarding pending resolutions. Anyone here, public, regarding that? Okay. If not, we have resolutions. I just want to point out that even though the engineer's office does not have anything for us today, Sunday was County Engineer Andy Conrad's 50th birthday. We'd like to take the opportunity to wish him a happy belated milestone birthday. Of course, at our age, every birthday is a milestone. But still, to remember 50. Anyway, so just want a happy birthday. All right, thanks. All right, Jeremy Senko, Sanitary Engineer.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for construction management services for the Grafton Road Water Main Replacement Project.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Jeremy, when will that project on Grafton Road begin?
We just opened bids on Friday, and hopefully we'll have the award resolution ready to go on Tuesday. Depending on material times, we're thinking maybe February, March, just due to lead time on material.
Okay.
All right, good. A roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Human Resources Department, Nicole Lee. Good morning.
Good morning, Nicole. Good morning. I have three resolutions for you today. The first one is the personnel changes resolution. We have three new hires, two at Solid Waste, one in Maintenance, seven rate increases, three in sanitary, four at Office for Older Adults, 14 fund changes, seven at sanitary, six at Solid Waste, and one at the Office for Older Adults. And we have one resignation in Maintenance. My second resolution is amending the table of organization for Medina County Job and Family Services. And then my third resolution is approving wage adjustments to non-bargaining employees under the Medina County Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Debbie Kylie, our Job and Family Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I see you voted.
I did. I'm wearing it proudly. Just two resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is providing contract services with Maximus for our Child Support Division. And then the second is authorizing a contract with Bryan Media Strategies for targeted marketing for our Child Protective Division.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, Scott Miller, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have 12 resolutions for you today. The first two resolutions are amending appropriations. This is through a transfer and an increase of those appropriations. Third resolution is authorizing various expanded adjustments for funds. The fourth resolution is authorizing revenue adjustment. The fifth resolution is authorizing a transfer for the Triple Children's Healthcare Fund. The sixth resolution is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various departments to cover print shop expenses. The seventh resolution is authorizing the purchase of 6,800 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline. Port petroleum had the lowest bid price of $3.318. The eighth resolution is authorizing the Medina County Sheriff's Office to purchase a new five-by-eight trailer. This is for $2,450. The ninth resolution is renewing an agreement with Airmark. This is for food services at the Jail and Detention Center. It runs from January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023. It's a one-year agreement. And it's increasing by CPI, which is about 8%. The 10th resolution is extending an agreement by and between Medina County Prosecutor and Medina County Commissioners and the Medina County Office for Older Adults for adult protective legal services. And the 11th resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution is allowing claims and authorizing issuance upon the treasure and settlement of such list of claims. This is an amount of $1,426,918.66.
I'll make a motion to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department Updates. Greg Brown, County Home Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
So, starting out with census, we're at 40 with potential resident coming in now the first week of December. He's got pushed back. Originally, it was going to be November. Staffing, fully staffed at this point. Events that have occurred. Our residents voted on the 27th of October, so they've got theirs in already. They get to visit the John Smart McDowell Phillips and also the Seville Historical Society, home of the Giants. Had to look that one up. Amy Perrine, our licensed social worker. She attended the Wadsworth Senior and Caregiver Expo. She was there with you in the Commissioners' Newsletter as well. She will also be at the Government and Safety Forces Expo tomorrow. Also, we had Access the Arts hosted an event at our place. And some of our upcoming ones, they're going to the Onslaughter Creek Retreat for presentational birds and the River Styx Park for natural discoveries. And then the Big Clutter Christmas is on the 30th. Some maintenance things. Maintenance came, fixed our gutters and winterized them, so hopefully we won't have the large ice dams this year up there. They've assisted us with some heating and cooling issues. Still really enjoying that boiler and also the central AC now. And then also RJ Vernak Refrigeration came and he installed our new freezer door for our walk-in freezer. An answer to last meeting was about the Airmark contract. And that was in last Tuesday's resolution. And same thing with the jail. The CPI increase was with the agreement. It was 8%. And then two donations that the Friends of Medina County Home received end of last month and this month. 100-plus women donated to them. And then also Faith in Action also gave us a donation check for them as well.
Good, good.
Yes, good time of year for that.
So Greg, is there any advertising? Or how do you get the word out that you have capacity at the home?
So, part of that will be like, even Amy tomorrow will be able to, at the Wadsworth Expo, that was a great opportunity. Word of mouth, the Facebook page. Any way that we can, there's always room.
Have we had anything in the Commissioners' Newsletter?
Lots of articles, but nothing specifically saying, "I have room," so.
It might be a good thing and even lay out the criteria of here's what the ideal characteristics are of a person that is acceptable at the home.
Absolutely.
Because you can't take anybody or everything.
Correct, there are those.
You have limited facilities and capabilities.
Correct. And on our website, I forget, there's always the website as well, those are specifically spelled out there. And then also in the Senior Service Network, their magazine, we're also in there. That's a big one that goes out to all locations.
But you have capacity for 52?
For 50, there are 52 beds. 50 is usually the...
That'd be squeezing them in pretty tight.
That would be very tight. So, yeah.
But, I mean, that's 20% increase in potentially revenue, so.
Correct, that as well. So, we're always looking for new residents. So, phones are still ringing. We still get calls. But once again, if they don't qualify for us, Amy's always able to at least assist them with finding another agency that might be able to help them.
Good, excellent. Yeah, so chat with Brian. I would like to see something going.
Okay, will do.
Good idea. Great.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks. Phil Titterington, Adam Board Director.
Let's speak fun. Thank you again for allowing me to present. And I'll just touch briefly on those areas that the levy funding really impacts the greatest. So, talking about mental health and crisis supports, just to kind of give you an idea, the report is for the first three quarters of fiscal year '23, which is July through August, or September, I'm sorry. So, really, what we're feeling at the Adam Board is just an unprecedented number of calls from people who are looking for services. And predominantly, we're seeing housing requests. They have just skyrocketed. And the complexity of the cases that are coming through. So, just I wanted to point out a couple examples of what we're seeing. So, we had a woman calling, seeking recovery housing options upon her release from residential. Another one called, looking for recovery housing options that would accept children. We had a male call, looking for recovery housing in Medina County because he wanted to be closer to family. A woman called, seeking housing options for her cousin who was evicted from his apartment due to hoarding behaviors. A mother called, looking to relocate her son, who has schizophrenia, to Medina County. A woman was asked to leave her current group home residence due to her intensive psychiatric needs with no place to go. We had a woman with significant mental health and substance use issues who had serious problems, other serious problems. Heat was, lines in the heat. Her piping were broken. She had no way to fund it. Just collaborating, trying to, you know, get her into a safe place without having her become homeless. So, these cases really take a lot of staff time, and they take a lot of collaboration. And we will continue on in these case with, like, Job and Family Services a lot of times. Alternative Paths, Hope Recovery Community, the Veterans, Medina Metro. So, you know, as you can imagine, that's the good thing about Medina County is there's a lot of collaborative partners. And really, what we see is people care. So, you don't just hand it off. I mean, you stay with these cases and you try to get them in the best place that they possibly can. Really, the difficulty is, is we don't have that many, you know. We need more housing options, and we all know that. We have 40, Adam Board has 44 supportive housing, full. We're at, you know, we could definitely use more. There are too few adult group homes in our county and even the surrounding areas. And many cannot or will not handle the complexity of the cases that are coming through. And really, we're looking at that emergency shelter. So, as that continues momentum, we are very supportive of that. Moving on, just to kind of give you, you know, the agencies' updates. Remember, we have our two main agencies, Ohio Guidestone and Alternative Paths operate here in Medina. But they also have offices in Lodi and Wadsworth. And Ohio Guidestone's really big in the homes in Brunswick as well. So, over this quarter, Alternative Paths has 4,157 clients. Ohio Guidestone, 605. Catholic Charities, 147. This is a total of 4,909. And of that, you have 87, 88% are adults, 12% are youth. Approximately 1,645 individuals are receiving psychiatric services. And 165 of those are youth. And then we had approximately 398 youth, which were diagnosed or are diagnosed with a serious emotional disturbance, which means those are the individuals in youth that are very intensive and require a lot of resources, a lot of time, and throughout their life as well. So, they're really addressing those. To help address the needs of the youth, you know, the Adam Board is constructing a youth resiliency and counseling center. It'll be a once-completed, 6,000-square-feet, trauma-centered. It'll have many different opportunities to really work with those families, build resiliency, and hopefully, you know, for the rest of their lives, you know, work with these youth and families. Human Services Levy really is critical as it's allowed us to, and the Adam Board, fill a lot of gaps and continue with some of the important work that's there. So, for example, we have the 24/7 Crisis Behavioral Helpline through Alternative Paths. In the first quarter, there were 724 calls or engagements through that hotline. Of those, 58 individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts. 32 had active rescues. And that's with the hotline, or whoever answered the call, would have either the crisis team go out or law enforcement to assist. And 68 referrals were made from law enforcement for crisis intervention. So, kind of the reverse. Law enforcement goes out, they know what to do, they call. So, that, once again, shows that collaboration and stuff. And then also, through the Adam Board support, Alternative Paths has a lost team and local outreach to suicide survivors. So, when there's a suicide, they'll dispatch a clinician that'll go out and work with the family. Sadly, during this quarter, we had five times that they had to go out and get dispatched, so. The next biggest thing that we, the levy helps fund is recovery supports. Hope Recovery Community is our biggest beneficiary, and they have a very diverse array of services. They are now in Brunswick, and they're big operations in Medina at the Highland House. They offer a wide recovery, supports, peer coaching, linkages to services. They also have now what's called Hope Link. So, 24 hours, seven days a week, somebody who's in need will call. They'll get linked up with a peer coach and at least walk them through the recovery process. So, that's actually a pretty neat thing. And in this first quarter, 197 individuals called that line. So, in the short existence that HRC was there, it has been there. It's grown the space. So, as you know, we're expanding that. We hope that the construction will be done sometime at the end of December with, you know, grand opening, ribbon conic, things like that, maybe first quarter of calendar year next year, so.
Looks nice. They're making progress.
Yeah, a little slower than I'd like, but...
But it's a big space.
Yeah.
It'll suit them well.
I think it's going to meet their need. Unless we can build up, that's all the space that we have, so. So, we'll make it work, so. There are 13 certified peer recovery supporters in the county working through Hope Recovery Community and Ohio Guidestone. They work together on that. And just to give you the numbers, during the first quarter, Guidestone peer supporters average serving 172 residents. So, just in the peer support there. On average, Hope Recovery Community averages about 2,000-plus touches, people going through their doors, one way or the other. Yes, duplicated sometimes. You know, it's very hard to track, and we're working on all of that stuff, so. Also, for, in this first quarter, peer supports, there's peer support through the jail that we pay for there. And 59 inmates were served at the Medina County Jail. Hope Recovery Community linked 132 individuals to detox, residential treatment, or recovery housing. The Adam Board pays for that when insurance doesn't cover it. They've expanded into Brunswick, and they have other programming, like a family peer support program, Hope on the Move. They staff not only the Discovery Recovery House as well as the Kathy's House, so there's that, everything working together there. And they're really becoming a model across the state. And they are the only recovery, certified recovery house in recovery community in the state of Ohio to actually have two locations in one county, so. So, we're going there. And then the goal then is also to touch Wadsworth as well. And then finally, kind of, other recovery supports in Medina County is medication-assisted treatment. That was a big one in terms of we were lacking, and now I think we have a plethora of different opportunities there. MET is often initiated in the jail. So, individuals that go, test positive, get engaged perhaps with jail services are offered, or sometimes they start that Vivitrol or medication assistance. In addition, some that come in with can continue with that so that there's no interruption moving through. 91 individuals received the MET through Ohio Guidestone. They have an open clinic as well as Alternative Paths in that first quarter. The Adam Board Discovery Recovery House, which is a certified Level III Women's Recovery House, continues to be full with a waiting list as well. And then also with Adam Board support, we support Kathy's House, which is a certified recovery. And now they have 28 beds, Level I, Level II, both mostly in Medina, but they also have one in Brunswick as well. Last page. And then finally, just want to touch about workforce. I know workforce is something that we all deal with. Similar to numerous other entities, we are feeling it and our agencies are feeling it, really. We continue to work with them to really retain and recruit staff. But we're also starting to see this in other behavioral health-related where it's impacting us. We're seeing youth residential facilities that are either closing wings or, because of capacity and staffing, they're refusing to take certain individuals that may require additional support and because they don't have the staff to do that. And we're seeing that also with adult group homes. And the group homes will either not take them or what we're finding is, is they'll just jack up the... They'll increase the daily rate and/or monthly. And we've seen the increase go anywhere from 3,000 that the Adam Board's paying to one client went up to 5,500 or something, just per month. And without the options there, we're really at the mercy at that point. So, that's why it's so important that that levy funding helps. It helps at least with some of those expenses. So, we're very, very thankful for that. So, in closing...
So, Phil, is the reason for the increases coming from the vendors, the providers? Because their costs are going up? Or, I mean, why are the costs going up so dramatically?
I think a couple of reasons. One is even just the simple economics of supply and demand. Aren't that many? You're going to do it. And we've had a youth residential facility that went up. We had an individual there in March. Daily rate was 587, which is very high for a day. Three months, four months later, it is that same youth, $911. And we're at that mercy. Second thing is, is they need to attract workforce. So, they put the expense on us so that they can increase staff wages and attract more people. So, it's really a combination of... And, I mean, traditionally, it's tough to... Some of these cases that come through are very tough, and they require multiple staffing. And if a residential or an adult group home says, hey, you know, I'm tired, I don't want to deal with that, they don't have to. Well, if we're gonna, then you're going to pay for it. So, it's kind of a combination of everything. And just kind of, in supplementing, I'm looking forward to continuing to working with the One Ohio and seeing how that whole project and process works and how we can best, you know, put dollars inside Medina County to serve and help out with all of these different issues that are going on. But, I mean, really, it's because of the levy that we have that we're going to put on next year, we're able to do what we're able to do. So, we're very thankful. So, that's really just kind of a third-quarter report. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners' Resolution is reappointing members to the Medina County Port Authority Board of Directors. It comes to the attention of the Board of Commissioners. The term for two members of the Board of Directors from Medina County Port Authority will expire on December 31st, 2022, whereas Christopher J. Benko and Donald M. Mich will have expressed an interest in being reappointed to said port authority. This appoints them to the port authority with their terms beginning January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes, and we thank them for their service and willingness to continue serving. Reappointing a member of the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. Amy Wormer, serving as Medina County Township Association Member 2 on the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability, expires September 30th, 2022. She wishes to continue to serve. This is reappoint, or term expiring, September 30th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes, and thank you for her service. This appoints a member of the Medina County Convention Visitors Bureau. Kathy Brighton Booker had previously been appointed but to serve as Commissioners' Representative. She is unable to continue serving in this capacity since her appointment as interim director of the Medina County Convention Visitors Bureau and is the desire of the Board to appoint me. I see me to handle, you serve on the governing board of Medina County Convention Visitors Bureau for the term ending on December 31st, 2026.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. That's it for our resolutions. Open up to public comment. Please come forward, give us your name and address. I see you're returning from last week.
Mark Frederick, 6146 West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio, United States of America, continent North America, planet Earth, Milky Way solar system, even the Martians can find me, and 6112 West Smith next door also. Thinking about it this morning, looking at everybody here. You know, Steve, you and I are the only two here that have been around coming to these meetings this long. Congratulations, you know? We're still getting along. And after I spoke last week, two words popped up. And that's why I'm here today. I think I need to address those two words. Steve, or Scott, you were right last week. You talked about people having an opinion, remember? You're darn right I got an opinion, and that's why I'm here to talk about it. That's what we fight for in America, freedom. That's what we vote for. And if your opinion differs from mine, so be it. And of course, I'm referring to what my opinion was last week about a couple of dog catchers, you know? And I had mentioned about county employees. And the second word that popped up was respect. And I'd like to comment on that, too. If you're going to get respect, I think you have to give it. And when a county employee called me a liar, that's the end of my respect for them. And quite honestly, that goes and trickles down to a whole lot of Medina County employees. You know, I've been around quite a while. You know it. You've seen me. I'm not going away, I hope. And be honest with you, I'm kind of disappointed. You took half the wind out of my sails today. Because I was really going to come up here and fuss about Scott mentioning that he would get me everything I wanted last week with the public records request. And I was handed something at 9:26 today, so I haven't had time to go over it, but you know I will. And the other thing I'd like to mention, I made a copy. I finally got one back from Medina Municipal Court. Because I said the dog catchers went nuts. I was right. Two of the tickets were thrown out and the third one was not guilty. And I made a copy of that. And if anybody wants to know about me taking care of animals, especially the dogs that I've been raising, purebred AKC Dermishepherds for forty years. Last week you heard me get tell you that I've had phone calls from people thanking me for selling them a pup. It saved my life, it saved my kids, so on, I don't make that up. And if you want to know about chickens, go down to Columbus this week at State Fairgrounds. There's a national chicken show, I'll be there, I got some pretty good birds. If you don't want to go to Columbus, no problem, go home, watch Netflix. There's a documentary on there from two thousand sixteen, real hard title, Chicken People. I've got some pretty good lines in it. And if you don't want to do that, you don't have Netflix, no problem, go to the library. Tell them to get you the movie there, I'm not making it up, go get the movie, pretty good. And I also like to mention that my chickens in that barn for the last forty years, which is why I got the Dermishepherds to guard the chickens. Ain't no forty-nine cents a pound stuff. These are rare birds, expensive birds. I've had letters from Poland to send Polish chickens to Poland. Couldn't do it, USDA rules and regulations and quarantine, don't even talk about even influenza, it had me going pretty good this summer. There were two reported cases in Ashland County. I talked to a couple of state vets friends of mine. They said two, it was really twelve. And they depopulate, nice way of saying they chopped the heads off everybody for fifty miles around. And on the way to Columbus to set up the chicken show over the weekend, I clocked the twenty-five miles. That would have been into me with chickens, I think. Folks, I'm gonna, I got a buddy coming from North Carolina, we're gonna spread some birds around, so if anything ever does happen, we still got one up my sleeve. And finally, I'm almost done, folks, I know you're paying. Hey, you guys remember Tom Turbianni by chance? I do, Geismann does, he had that pig farm down on Route eighty-three. Oh, surprise, yeah, see, I'm not as senile as you hope. And if you guys remember Tom Turbianni, I've often threatened, you hope I don't come true to it, to start a pig farm over on West Smith. Wouldn't take but much, one trip down to Kidron Auction on a Thursday, pick up two hundred pigs at Frederick's Pig Farm. And guess what? The wind blows from the west into the city. So when somebody's sitting at the gazebo with their five dollar ice cream cone waiting to get a lick and phew, a puff of that pig farm hits them. Wouldn't be too good for Medina City, I'll tell you that. And the other thing, I know that's a good one, but you know I could do it. It's agricultural where I'm at, I'm a Lafayette township. Buy four houses, and that's why I will not annex, not to mention Bambi hunting. And finally, the last thing, I know I'm gonna go, forgot my timer today, but I'm sure I'm close to five minutes.
It is close, go ahead.
That's what I figured. I would like to say that I give my support to these two of you today in today's election. You know, I'm sincere about that, I don't know if you saw an email I sent you earlier. And I hope you did go talk to these dog catchers about selling property, and once it's sold, it ain't yours no more. If not, go do your job. And Hambley, you missed it last week, you're a teacher, go teach them.
I did watch the video.
Good, I bet you did, a whole lot of others did, too. Well, anyhow, congratulations to everybody here. I don't know what I'm gonna crap about next week because I gotta go home and study this public records now. Anyhow, good luck on your election today.
Thank you, Mark.
And let us know if you have any more questions.
Oh, you know I will.
Yeah, I know, thank you. Anyone else, public comment? If not, we'll open up for a discussion session. Um, if you don't mind, we'll jump in, should we have the county treasurer here with us today? Um, we're wanted to bring up for discussion the fix-it funds for landlords. Um, we've had some previous discussions in the Investment Advisory Committee about this. Wanted to bring it up for the Board consideration of whether to move forward with further discussions. Oh, good, well, good timing. He just was s- sitting outside there. Oh, okay, all right. So Skip Sipas with Medina Metropolitan Housing Authorities here, thank you. Uh, but we wanted to talk about the the current program. Um, and I think I provided you with enough of the information to kind of uh, uh, refresh your memories as to how it works. Uh, the, I'll just go through the basic changes that we're looking anticipate. Uh, right now landlords are eligible for the fix-it fund programs under that program, one to four family unit dwellings uh, with a home value of three hundred thousand dollars or less are eligible. But for that, the landlord has to be basically present there. This proposal would change that, that the landlord is now longer required to be present. So this would allow those properties to be improved and and be have accessible to these, if you will, reduced rate uh, uh, bank loans for the same purposes, no changes in the purposes as to, you know, driveways and gutters and and any other improvement sidewalks, uh, code modification, early stop grading to the code and all those kind of things. Um, likewise, I believe that the the, under the current uh, discussion with Westfield and with our group, uh, we also talked about increasing that up to six dwelling units that they would be eligible. So they would landlord would no longer have be have to be there as well as it'd be up to six dwelling units. Um, I think likewise, we've been sitting down with Westfield Bank, looking at the terms. There'd be two basic aspects of the program. One is that they would get the the discounted rate program, uh, regardless of their, if you will, as long as they comply with that. A sec- a second type of program would be that would also include those landlords that participate in the voucher programs. Um, and the anticipation would be that actually they would get an additional discount because of the greater value to the the bank. Uh, the banking community would have a basically be able to, um, it's called a CRA program with federal credits. Uh, there's an enhancement that the federal government believes at home that it that those that are participating landlords in a voucher program can receive a be a be better benefit and banks that help assist those in keeping those properties improved and funded ought to get additional benefits. Um, this is uh, the intent would be to be able to eligible for those funds for those purposes. Um, I I think, uh, we've, like I said, we've had several discussions with with Westfield. We're now getting to the point where we would try to refine the program and move forward. This would require, as I understand from the prosecutor's office, we'd have to get the consent, once we approve the details, uh, the consent of every jurisdiction that that would be involved, that these improvements will be made. So that means all seventeen townships, five villages and three cities. Um, and John, am I missing anything on the um, on the program outline? Okay, all right, all right. Skip, did you want to describe the uh, the the voucher program? I think, uh, let me just step, take a step back. Phil was talking about it, it there, we need more housing options in this county. We're seeing it now on those that have need assistance and social assistance, public assistance, but even those on the, we'll just say the the starting housing. Those that are just starting in life, those that are getting towards the end of their, I'll just say their their livelihood, are looking for better housing options. Uh, whether they are ownership, whether they're rentals, um, and so forth. And we have a significant issue in this in this county inasmuch as the cost of housing has escalated tremendously. And we're trying to uh, increase the ability of affordability of good housing stock. And being able to use a lot utilize this program to enhance that, not only for those that would be qualified for vouchers, but also those not starting that actually would assist in landlords, not only to keep their rents reasonable, hopefully also to keep their properties improved and certainly the community and the neighborhoods improved. So the the intent is to help in dealing with this, I won't call it a housing crisis, but certainly is one that we've seen it. A great concern to many people of trying to find and and the rising cost of housing. Uh, all populations have been affected by this, all characteristics of individuals have been affected by these rising cost of housing. And this is one of many elements that can be done at the county level to assist people in being able to afford to have a house. Likewise, we're trying to help deal in the emergency and the temporary housing, supportive housing. But this will deal with those other aspects where people are looking for rental properties that they can go in and at an affordable level be able to have a decent decent house that they can, uh, they can, or decent dwelling that they can live with it. Skip, did you want to describe the voucher program or, okay, sure, please, if you wouldn't mind?
Good morning.
I'm just got out there.
Um, as a general reminder, the rental assistance program is unlike food assistance or other programs that are prob- put out by the federal government. Uh, rental assistance is one that we have to compete for, so all the resources that the housing authority gets are competed for and then have to be retained. Um, we have the ability to serve through this one rental assistance program, we have many, but this one, six hundred and eighty-nine households. Um, we're currently running at about ninety-one percent utilization. In the old days, we were ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. And so what we're looking for are ways to incentivize landlords to participate. As Steve mentioned, the the economy is driving the price of rental housing as well as ownership through the roof. And so landlords are opting not to rent through our program. Because of federal regulations, we have some restrictions on what kind of rental assistance we can provide. We're not gonna provide assistance in Fox Meadows, we're not gonna provide assistance in the reserve. So um, we're looking for tools for our toolbox. Um, and one of those would be the ability for landlords to get discounted uh, home improvement loans and tie that to the rental assistance program. We need them to participate. They're not simply because they can charge more than we're allowed to to assist. Another tool in the toolbox is what's called the Moving to Work Program. You may have read about it in the paper, the housing authority is one of only seventeen agencies in the country that was selected for this program, uh, the only one in Ohio. That will give us some regulatory relief, but we're looking for multiple tools in the toolbox. And affordable housing feeds the local economy. It can help with employers employers who are searching, much like the county itself is. It can help with the local retailers in terms of a revenue stream. When people pay a proportionate amount of their income on housing, the goal is about thirty percent. They have more disposable income to spend on other things that affect the quality of their lives. It's nutrition, wellness, education. And so then they become more integrated into the fabric of community. Um, a stat that you should know, an eligible household for this rental assistance program, it's got three people, they can make up to thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So we're talking about folks that are working that just need a a little bit of assistance. So I would encourage you to consider this piece of the puzzle, if you will, another tool for the toolbox. Um, and as we work to get some regulatory relief on other ends, all of those tools, think of it of a bigger chest. You guys as commissioners have other tool drawers in the tool chest, public safety, economic development, affordable housing's a big piece of that. And as we address it, I think we get stronger as a county. And I'm happy to take questions if they have any.
Do you have any idea what the average rental rate is for a residence or apartment?
It depends on the type of unit, depends on the amenities offered, um, so, I mean.
So, I mean, the thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, they and and a third of that go to rent, so that's roughly a thousand bucks a month. So I mean, I I've just tried to get a sense of.
A three-bedroom unit right now for our program, I believe that the net rent after you do some utility stuff would be less than than that, okay? Um, and I can tell you that my my daughter and her husband have a three-bedroom rental unit in Medina and they get fifteen hundred dollars a month for it. That's a nice house, Ken Cleveland patio home. But we're struggling to find landlords willing to either take a, give us a discount, if you will. Um, because they're driven by economics. So if we can find ways to incentivize them economically and some other conditions, which we've been working on, um, selling them on the value of the program, our folks stay in residency longer, that's an incentive, but they gotta buy. And so we're looking for reasons for people to buy.
Now landlords that are in the in your voucher program, uh, there are benefits to being part of that.
Sure, we do background checks before people move in. Um, we make sure that their criminal records are checked. We do inspections so that we can help landlords understand where they may be prone to having some problems. Um, a new law that goes into effect the first of the year from is the rental units that are subsidized have to have CO detectors. And so we have been in informing our landlords about that and we'll be testing them for them as we go forward as part of our routine inspection process.
There's also the guaranteed deposit.
Yes, we 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 wire money to them, we don't send them a check, we're not relying on the postal service. Uh, their payments are automatically sent through ACH directly to their bank accounts at the beginning of the month.
So once they're qualifying, they have a they have a an individual there, they're actually guaranteed, they're gonna get the right payment.
They're gonna, absolutely gonna get our share of the money every month, yes.
Right. Anything else? And I know you've you've got a program in meeting with and trying to develop more and encourage more landlords.
We are.
And this would be one of those tools that hopefully could end up being offered sometime. Hopefully, we can get this going next year. And so here's another, and especially if they need to make some improvements in order to accommodate more, you know, people coming in and utilizing that part. Or upgrades, anybody that has had a structure for any period of time, usually there's something needs to be done, whether it's gutters or siding or roofing or whatever. And this has to be the same requirements of a five-year loan amortizing, of course, with with limits. And and then it's one that's not at risk to the county, but one that basically the bank is taking the the risk.
And and they're happy to jump in line to do this. And keep in mind, this is a scarce federal resource that we have and we're leaving thirty or forty assisted households on the table every month because we have that shortage of landlords. And so anything we can do, we can cobble together as a program to ent- entice those landlords come into the program, we're better off.
Got it. So this uh, program, the fix-it funds
Mm-hmm.
applies whether they are in the.
Owner occupied or not. This would allow for a non-owner occupied unit to be assisted.
Right, but they don't have to be in.
In the voucher program.
Voucher program.
That's right.
In order to receive.
That's right.
That's just another option.
Yes, and then a slight enhancement for them if they would, but this is just, again, it's another opportunity for us to get in front of landlords.
The the bank, I guess the bank, and I can be free to say that there'd be considerable enhancement if they are a voucher. Uh, if they do accept that in terms of reduction of of interest rate because of the value to the bank.
CRA points are hard to come by in this county.
So because of our our wealth and so forth, and it has a greater value to them, federal government by policy and and preferences have encouraged that. So in this way, you're actually assisting the bank in getting those credits.
Yeah, that CRA is Community Reinvestment Act, not the CRA you guys hear about.
Right, that's right.
Okay, so.
I understand.
Okay. All right. So I just, I wanted to get your input, if you're comfortable with this, go ahead and proceeding. This is not the final uh, resolution, but as we work with it, I just want to make sure that we're in step. Yes, oh yeah, please, John, if you would, please.
So I just wanted to add a few comments on this
Good, thanks.
Because we've been talking about this uh, for a couple of months. Uh, now, our original program, we started in two thousand two fix-it fund program, it was for residential. But like Steve said, it did include up to four apartment buildings, but the difference was the owner has to occupy it. So this goes beyond that a little bit. Uh, you know, we've done sixteen million in loans, you know, home improvement loans, uh, discounted for people and it's been over a thousand homeowners that have borrowed, uh, since we started that. So that's been a real successful program. So some of the things that I've noticed that I think have made that successful, okay, let me just go over a a couple of these. Because I want this to be successful, I just don't want to create a program that we get a few hits on and we put it in our toolbox and then it doesn't go anywhere, you know? So the first thing is, yeah, you gotta identify a pool of customer base and a need, okay? So and that's one reason why we've talked about this. And the voucher program, we want to enhance that. So one thing that we've talked about, give you a little detail on that, so there's what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Skip, but I think you said there were seven hundred and eighty-five vouchers to the county, right? And it go to families for the voucher program right now, right?
Specifically, we're talking about six eighty-nine.
Oh, six eighty-nine, and there's about eighty-seven or so that aren't used right now, right?
It varies month to month.
Yeah, it varies.
Ninety-one point five percent.
So so that's that's a potential pool, you know? And so if you think of six, up to six apartments in a unit, that's about eleven units, okay? So that's that's a pool of people. But that's another reason why we said we gotta extend that a little bit beyond that. We'll give a bigger discount to those to try to get them on the voucher program, but we, let's try to get some other landowners, too, to improve their program. And that's why the bank is considering this right now and we're talking about like a two percent for the voucher program and those that still want to improve but don't want to do vouchers, a percent and a half, something like that. But the key is to get and identify this this pool of of possible customers. And then I think we need to, once we get all the details worked out, we really need to go to talk to a couple of these people, you know, and say, hey, is is this program, is this, would this be an incentive? You know, to improve your apartments for people, you know, type of thing. The other thing is we need to provide funding for it. Uh, and we haven't touched on this here at this meeting, but quite simply, it's the same as we did for the first program. Uh, we need to go to the Investment Advisory Board and set some money aside. Because as you know, linked deposit program, the way it works is we don't generate money for loans directly. We go and partner with the bank and then they do the loans, that's their responsibility. If something goes bad, that's their problem. By the way, out of all those thousands of loans, we've never had one default, okay?
It's been a record.
Yeah, it's it's been very, very successful. In fact, uh, we're probably the most successful in the state on that right now. Um, but anyway, so um, you've got um, the funding and because this has to be a separate program, we have to put separate money aside. So we're thinking, you know, let's set another five million aside. Uh, and and remember, it's a five-year loan thing also, uh, and I'll go over that in a minute. So you don't have five million out at any given time, you know, it's a one million, but you got so much over a four, four and a half year amortized period. Um, so we'll need to do that with the Investment Advisory Board. The other thing is partnering with the bank. And luckily, we have had a very good relationship with Westfield Bank on this and they're interested in it. And one reason why they're interested in it is the CRA, they get a credit if they help low or um, low-income people and also small businesses out with a loan. So we've got their interest with that. Um, but there's also several details we've got to work out with them. And I'll just bring a couple up that we talked about. So this five-year loan period, because it's a linked deposit, that's all of longer we can go out. And the other side of that, which I didn't mention, was the bank loans out the money, whatever they loan out, we take out in a money market or seed-in investment with them. They discount their rate two percent, we get two percent less than the market rate. Now that market rates are going up, we can do that. When they were down so low, Westfield Bank was actually um, letting us invest at regular rates. So again, a good relationship with a bank really helps in this program when your interest rates go up and down. So um, we got an issue with that with apartment buildings. So that's another thing we didn't talk about, but our minimum and our maximum in the old program is five to fifty thousand dollars they can borrow. Well, apartment complex with six apartments, let's say, is gonna need more money. So we're talking about right now extending it to a hundred and fifty thousand tops, you know, so they can do a little more with up to six apartments. But the other thing is, it's a five-year investment for us by law. So with residential homes, that's worked out fine. It's a equity loan that's paid back in five years. With this, we're talking bigger money, it's gotta be extended out. So the one thing the bank's looking at, and this is one thing we're working with them on, they'll get back to us. They're going to amortize that over maybe twenty years, so their payment is reasonable. But at the end of five years, they gotta renegotiate the loan or roll it over and we got it.
Five-year balloon.
Right, or a balloon payment.
Or payoff, whatever, if it's a reduced.
Or payoff, or yeah, or a balloon payment or something, but we gotta figure that out because that's a that's a sticker point, too, you know? We can't get sticker shock, five years with a bigger loan, you know, it's not gonna work. Um, so that that's another thing that the bank's gonna be working on and and they'll get back to us. Um, and they think with the with the two rate scale, two and a half, one and a half percent, that'll attract enough that they might be, again, interested in this program. Um, so we're working out the details with the bank, they're gonna take a couple of months on that, they said. Um, just because they take, they gotta roll it through their legal and everything else. And you work for an insurance company, so you know that, Bill. That, we also, when we get the details done, we gotta have the prosecutor review it. He's already kinda reviewed the whole thing and that's where he came up and said, this is a different program. You have to go out to every political subdivision, get their okay on it so that the owners and the residents in that.
So that's the definition of a participating community?
Yes, the participating community. They have to agree to be a participant in, as a community in the program.
For them to have the loan.
Yeah, to allow anybody that has that property there to be in the law. So I I did that last time and I literally went around and visited every council meeting, township meeting, because questions come up. And we had a hundred percent success rate with that. And uh, that's what I would assume that we want again, you don't want. You don't want to have it split up where some are doing it and some aren't. So, you know, that takes a little bit of time. And then, of course, we need the resolution from the commissioners, you know, at one point. That's, that's a simple and quick thing. And we get the approval from everybody. And then we need a marketing program. And what has proved successful with our first one, I would suggest probably, that's what we need to think about for the next one, which is, you know, we, we do, of course, the newspapers. I, I've got videos out when we do it on, on the government channels. We do robocalls, we do postcards. So we're, we have a marketing program that seems successful with that. We'll have to create one and do that with this also. And so the timeframe looks like, you know, with the banks and everything, the next month or two, the resolution, you know, getting everybody's approval. So the bank's looking at next spring, next summer, okay?
Okay.
A little more detail, but hopefully that informs you.
So, John, one of the areas I would go to is board the Realtors, because they have a lot of Realtors that do property management, and they control a lot of the rentals in the county.
We actually, in the, in the original program, we send notice out to all the Realtors and contractors, because they often are good referrals. So, yeah, that's a good point. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, you comfortable with moving forward, we'll be honest? Great. All right, thanks. All right, that's all I had. But we go rest of the discussion session. Scott, thanks, Skip.
Just have a couple of things.
All right.
I was contacted by Columbia Gas last week, and they need to, they need an easement out of the fairgrounds. There's a couple of buildings, barns, they're in the fairgrounds that currently have gas lines to them. And they need an easement, because they need to replace some of those lines, and they need to replace the connections. Because currently, those connections don't meet code. I've talked to Mike Goll, of the Fair Board. He's gonna contact them and get some details, because some of those barns, at least one of the barns they plan to tear down, so they may just need to cap some of those lines and not actually extend those lines. So work, work through those details. But I guess I just want permission from you if they want to move forward with, with the easement, if I can go ahead and get that in resolution and get that to you at some point in the future.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
The only thing I would say, Scott, is a lot of the easements that they'd like to have is a blanket easement. It does not have a description of where exactly the easement is, and, and I would recommend that they get that.
Okay.
So if they want it.
So you, that way they basically are marked, and it's a description.
Right, it's a legal, it's a meets and bounds description of exactly where the line is, as opposed to a general blanket easement that basically says, we can go anywhere on the property we want.
Okay.
I, I would agree. I'd agree.
All right. The other thing I want to let you know, as you know, we've, we've looked at doing some renovations out the YWCA for Ohio State Extension. We met with WB Mason, yesterday, Friday, yesterday. And so I think, I think they're fine with the layout, the furniture, the cubicles that we're planning to put in. I know Stevens Group is working on getting together the bids for some of the renovations. So we're moving forward with that. I expect that it'll probably be sometime next, next spring that, that'll be completed. So wanted to update you on that. The courthouse, we met last week with the courts. We are coordinating the move. I've actually asked Rhonda to take care of the records disposal and the inventory. You can handle all of that. And then we're still on schedule. There is, could be an issue with metal doors. They have not shipped some of the metal doors yet, and we've not had confirmation that those doors are shipping. If we don't get those metal doors, we won't meet fire code, as I understand it, and that will delay our CBO. So all for, you know, all for the sake of just getting doors in. But, but we're hopeful that those will come in and those will be able to be put up, so. So that's where we are at the courthouse. We do have the space. We walked the courthouse with Judge Schaefer last week also. And we do have a plan on where she, her staff will be located. We have a plan on where the furniture will be stored, at least for the six months. So again, I think everything is falling into place, and we're ready to go. It's just a matter of making sure that all the, all the items that are needed are actually received.
I do want to publicly acknowledge Rhonda for taking this task on, especially the move of, of the inventory, the cataloging, that I'm getting all that information together. Normally, departments and the elected officials are responsible for that. And we're taking, she's taking on an inordinate amount of responsibility in helping facilitate that and making sure it's done according to the Ohio Vice Code, which is not very easy to do. The last time, I was, I was looking research of our human resources, Herman Simvus's building, that whenever those various agencies moving in there, the commissioners actually, in nineteen eighty-one, actually hired an architect to oversee the movement of those agencies and the equipment and inventory for that. And so we're not going outside, we're going inside to get a lot of work done. And I just want to thank and acknowledge Rhonda for that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very thankful that she agreed to take it on.
Yeah, it's a lot more complicated than just a few agencies, for sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks for all the hard work in getting this to where it is.
Jeremy?
It's almost there.
I know.
Morning again. Actually, two things. One, we have the county veterans breakfast for the employees on Thursday at eight o'clock. So I think we're getting everything squared away for that, so that's usually a pretty good time.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock. I think it said eight oh three in the actual document, but. The other item I would like to discuss this morning is sanitary sewer and water rate proposed or recommended increases. I did mention that during my budget hearing about a month ago or so. And in the, kinda what I was hoping to get direction on that, so if we are able to increase the rates that we can notify the residents before the rate increases actually happen. Just so you recall, on the sanitary sewer side, we're proposing a three-dollar equivalent residential unit increase per month. The residents would, would see a three-dollar rate increase per month. We bill by monthly, so six dollars on their bill. One of the main reasons for that, we've seen experienced cost increase in our material cost, fuel cost, utility cost, projects. Everything is, is just costing-
So what is the current, what's the current ERU?
Uh, the current ERU is twenty-four seventy-five, and then we would move that to twenty-seven seventy-five. And then there is also a five dollar and fifty cent debt retirement component of that bill. So thirty-three twenty-five would be the new monthly total for that. Just also, the last sanitary sewer rate increase was done on January twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen. So just about ten years ago. I was, and I would recommend that we implement this rate increase beginning January one of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
On the water side, I'm proposing a sixty-five cents per thousand gallon increase. And that would bring the water rate to nine dollars and thirty-five cent per thousand gallons, and that would also be beginning January one of twenty twenty-three. An average family, we'll call it, using about five thousand gallons a, a month, would see about a three dollar and twenty-five cent per month increase there. And again, that's a bimonthly bill. And we're, and we're seeing the same price increases across the board on the water side as well.
Is the minimum usage gonna change?
The minimum usage would not change. It's a, on a bimonthly bill, it's a two, a two thousand gallon minimum bill.
But it would be based on the increased rate?
That's correct, nine dollars and thirty-five cents. And there is also a water debt component on that utility bill as well for the water, and that's based on the water meter size. So I guess if I, if with approval, I'd like to maybe present this next week for approval, if you're in favor. And then we can get, start getting notifications out in our bills at the end of this month, and then also at the end of December, so we can get ahead of that for, for the customers.
If, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to do a public hearing at nine o'clock in the morning on this.
Next week?
Next week, before we do the increase? So at least we have that input, if that works out.
And if I'm not mistaken, there might be a solid waste-
Is there?
Yeah, we already have something.
Hearing Tuesday morning. I can't remember if it's at eight-thirty.
We have an eleven o'clock Monday, and then-
Wednesday at five. Don't have my electronics on me.
No, I thought the extra-
Next Wednesday.
We have a, we have a solid waste-
Yeah, solid waste, five o'clock.
At eight-thirty. So this would do at nine o'clock.
Eight-thirty and nine o'clock.
So I'm presuming that the solid waste will take a half hour, and we can certainly go over. At least let's have another hearing just before the commissioner's meeting. Would that be all right?
Yep, not a problem with me.
We're gonna be here anyway.
Yep.
Well, for that matter, Steve, though, we do have the solid waste public hearing set for December sixteenth at five.
Sure, right, right.
So I mean, even if we wanted to have a second hearing for water rates?
Well, I guess the question is, you were, you were looking for action next week.
Correct, yeah.
He wanted to take action, that's the question. I mean, if we need more than one-
We have, we have one Monday at eleven o'clock. We could do a, a second one, hook up with that.
Yeah, I can do that too. That works.
All right.
So what time Monday?
Ten thirty?
Ten thirty works.
Sure, okay.
So then we're having two.
Two public hearings, then. Okay, that would work out great.
Perfect.
Back to back, basically. All Jeremy. Back to back.
Sounds great. All right, well, thank you for your consideration of that.
Very good, okay.
Thanks, Jeremy.
And Rhonda, you'll make sure we advertise those?
Yes.
Thank you. Debbie, anything else?
Yes.
Please.
Just two quick reminders for events that are happening on or around Job and Family Services. So on the tenth, which is just Thursday, I believe, from six until eight o'clock PM at the Medina Eagles, we're having our coats for kids. It's for grades, children, grades K through twelve, and for children in Medina County, please. We would prefer the children be present, because a lot of times, we haven't done the coats for kids since twenty nineteen because of a certain thing that was happening. So this, this will be our first one. And what we found to be more effective is that the children can come and try on the coats. That way, we're sure that they fit, that the children like the coats. So if the children can come, and then the parents or their guardians or custodians bring their ID, just to prove who they are. So that's from six to eight at the Medina Eagles. And then our holiday toy drive, it's our third one, at the, at the JFS Building on the twelfth, so that's this coming Saturday from nine until noon. So individuals, whoever across the county, can come and provide an unwrapped gift for children that are in our care. We'll do all the sorting, all the, everything. We wrap them. We just prefer that they be unwrapped so that we can identify what the type of toy is, and then make sure it goes to the right family. If you're not sure what, what type of toy or, or item to give for the toy drive, we do have an Amazon Smile account. So if you look that up, we try and update that periodically, so that the list is out there. And then if you're still not sure what to do, gift cards are always welcomed, because we can fill in the gaps with the gift cards and give them to kinship families or foster families. Thank you.
What is the date of the Eagles?
The Eagles is this Thursday, so that's the tenth from six until eight PM. And then the toy drive is Saturday, the twelfth, from nine until noon.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Craig, anything else? Phil, any more bullet points? Sorry, Steven?
Oh, he's, just like Jeremy, every time he comes up, you're costing us money.
Well, then I can leave that off the books for today. North Staircase is going, the construction's going to start this week, so that door will stop working, and they will start demolition on Friday, it sounds like. So they'll probably be prepping on Thursday. The jails parking lot, we are completed with the pavement from the Sallyport around to where the sheriff officers park their, their cruisers. And then we are going to stop for the season. I think they've got some cleanup to do yet, but then they'll start back up in spring. And then the last-
Are they shutting down the Eschewa plant, sorry?
I do believe they are. I think, I know they were open Saturday for a few different projects, but I don't believe. I think this has been about it, so. And then the last thing I have is going to cost you money, so.
It's all right.
The Human Service Center wall and-
The bridge?
The bridge will, I'll be bringing that on resolution probably next week. The bids came in. We had one bid, and it was seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Our bidding estimate was eight twenty-five, so it came in just under that, but not by much.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you.
You gotta take care of them.
John, did you have anything else? Of ours? Okay, nothing, all right. Bill?
Just one comment, recognition for Sheriff Grice and the Medina County Jail. They went through their annual inspection and did a phenomenal job at a time when they were actually over capacity with inmates. So they, yeah, out of a hundred and seventy-five total standards, fifty-three that are essential, one hundred and twenty-two that are important, they had five areas that they were critiqued on, and, and such things as lighting and not enough space per inmate, which was largely due to the fact they had more than their capacity. So Sheriff Grice and Lieutenant Lesak are to be commended for their-
Great.
Good job.
Job. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Colleen?
Nothing.
All right, good. We have requests for executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes. I do, this will end our live broadcast. We will be returning, but we'll be concluding for the day there. I did want to mention that if you haven't, since we are live now, that you haven't called out and voted, please do. As of last night, it was almost thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine people had voted, which is an immense number. I went there early this morning. It was busy, but it literally took less than five minutes to get through. They processed very quickly. There was no lines, so I can almost guarantee you that if you go to the polls between now and seven-thirty tonight, you're not gonna have to wait very long. So please vote if you haven't done so. Everybody have a good week.